Got it. I had a test today on the little wall. Not gonna get up till I have to.
It's a little out of level, huh?
All right. All right, everyone. I'd like to call the Water Works Board meeting for Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, to order. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Rob Getzloff.
Present.
Councilwoman Robin Arvinitas.
Here.
Councilman Kevin Conley. Councilman Caleb Johnson.
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt.
Here.
Attorney David Austin.
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer.
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
Here.
IT Dan Gin. Nise Engineering Neil Simstad. Public Works Director Chad Nandorf.
Here.
Director of Operations Andy Hansen. Town Manager Jim Gorman.
Here.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal. Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you. The Water Board consists of three members, myself, Councilman Kevin Conley, and Councilwoman Robin Arvinitas. At this time, we exclude Councilman Caleb Johnson and Councilman Tom Schmidt from this meeting. We'll go with the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting. Pleasure of the board.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
None, Mr. President.
Pleasure of the board.
Moved to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three zero. Reports from staff, Jim?
No reports.
Okay. Water Board members? No. There is no old business or new business, so I'll take any business from the floor regarding waterworks. Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Any business from the floor regarding waterworks? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll now go on to the redevelopment.
Call to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-three. The time is seven oh two P M. The redevelopment commission is comprised of the entire town council, so we'll bring in first Caleb Johnson and Tom Schmidt into the redevelopment meeting. Our advisor Nicole Kelly from the Lake Central School Board, is she here with us? I don't see her. Okay. All right, moving on. Minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is five zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claims? No additional claims, Mr. President. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This is five zero. Reports from staff?
I do have one report, Mr. Conley, on twenty-two West Joliet property. We have a couple of appraisals that have been ordered. Timeline on those are at least two to three weeks away. Once they come back, we're gonna send out the request for proposals for the development of that property.
Thank you. Good progress. Thank you, Mr. Gorman. That was gonna be my question tonight. Thank you. Beat me to it. Any reports from council members?
None.
Okay. All right, we don't have any old business. We don't have anything new to discuss. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Utility Board on Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, at seven oh four P M. The roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Redevelopment Commission. First on the agenda are the minutes of the July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda are claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Claims approved, five to zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. Do we have any staff reports regarding the Utility Board?
No reports.
Do we have any council member reports regarding the Utility Board?
No.
None.
We have no old business. We have no new business. Is there any business from the floor regarding the Utility Board? Any business from the floor? Seeing and hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the town council meeting for Wednesday, August ninth, at approximately seven oh five P M. The roll call will stay the same as the Utility Board. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the July twelfth public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
Mr. President, if there is one additional claim I'd like to have added here, this claim is to the Ampernard Construction LLC Company. It is for twenty thousand five hundred dollars, and this was for the project at Trace Park for our park, in our Park District, for a demo disposal of existing play tile. We received this late, that's why we're adding it to the agenda right now.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. Motion to approve claims.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Moving on to reports. We'll start to the left there, Mr. Chief Patterson.
No reports.
Deputy Chief Dave Meyer.
Nothing to report, sir.
Police Chief Pete Sormas.
Nothing at this time.
Park Superintendent John Novosich.
No report.
Our town engineer Neil Simstad. Our public works director Chad Nandorf. Operation manager Andy Hansen.
I don't really have any reports, but I would just like to say the Iliana survey ends on the eleventh, so it's back here. If anybody wants to take it, I can help you fill it out. It's very quick. That's it.
Mr. Gorman.
No reports.
Council members, any reports?
Uh-uh.
Nope.
No reports. Thank you. We'll move right into the next item. The next item's public comments regarding agenda items. Is there any public comments regarding agenda items? Any republic comments regarding agenda items? No public comments. We'll move right into old business. First item on old business is item A is the request to access town property to repair material containment wall behind Smith Concrete. The petitioner is Richie Ruth from Target Rentals, locations one thousand one, U.S. forty-one. This has been deferred from June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three meetings. Mr. Gorman, you wanna start this conversation?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. This is a right-of-entry license and property agreement, usage agreement. We have a draft of this agreement to allow Mr. Ruth to enter onto our property to repair his containment wall, and we've been going back and forth trying to get an agreement together. We do have this agreement together. It is before you tonight, and just looking for approval or what do you got? If you have any questions, I can answer them, and the petitioner is here tonight, Mr. Ruth as well.
Mr. Gorman, has the petitioner received this latest agreement? Has he reviewed it? Is he in agreement?
No, he has not received it.
Okay. Sounds like that would need to take place before we make any consideration.
Yeah.
Do we have any comment? Does the petitioner or is Representative Mr. Volkman, you wanna come up?
Thank you. I haven't seen the entire agreement. I just saw from my conversations with Jim some of the terms. We, you know, if those are the terms that are in the agreement, I don't, we don't have any exception to that. We'd like to know, I know there was a thing about landscaping, and it had a dollar amount of a thousand dollars or agreed to. I don't know what kind of maintenance they would be on there that's not there now.
Yeah, since we don't have the maintenance plan, basically, there's always the option of when that landscaping needs to be taken care of, Mr. Ruth could take care of that, or he could pay the town to take care of it if there's any issues with it moving forward.
I don't, you know, if the firm goes in the way we plan, there wouldn't be any maintenance on it because it would be planted with trees and stuff, and after it gets established, there would be no long-term maintenance or very minimal. And, but I mean, a thousand dollars is a lot for yearly maintenance. I don't think it would be that high for that small area.
Right, I agree with that.
Okay. I mean, is that something that could be discussed?
Yes.
It doesn't really say a thousand dollars. It says agreed upon.
Right, it would be whatever it costs the town if they were to take care of it.
Okay.
You know, if there was mulched, the whole plate, it needed to be mulched, or I'm not sure, I didn't see the plan for the landscaping.
We don't have one yet because, you know, to get the permitting, there's a lot more hoops to jump through.
Exactly.
Didn't want to expend any money without knowing what we were doing. And then the other thing was, for the agreement, I don't know what Dave's bill is. That'd be the only outstanding financial commitment.
It's gonna be a lot.
Thanks, Caleb, and I don't think that's probably the only expense. There's some discussion still to be had about this, since you haven't seen the document that they've seen. You really probably ought to see it, Bob.
Well.
Otherwise, I'm gonna give you a blank check, and you can fill in the number for me?
I can do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Gorman, should we go over the main objectives that's on here with the petitioner?
I mean, I'm sure Mr. Ruth would like to review it maybe with his attorney or something. I think we should work on the two things we just spoke of and maybe defer it till the next meeting. I mean, that's up to you, but they haven't seen the document, so I wouldn't accept if I were them, but.
I don't think we're far apart. You know, we also, you guys are, if you guys are in agreement with the agreement, authorize, you know, the council president and the town manager to finish this off with the town attorney.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. We have a contract here that's been drafted. We can authorize this contract with the minor corrections that's on it and give the approval if the petitioner is in approval of it. We can, that way he can get started. We're going into September, or August now, and he's gonna need a couple months to, our main goal is to get that wall fixed on the property, so I would.
I agree with that.
I would look, I would look to, for a motion to pass the agreement that we have in front of us with the corrections, and then have the authority, have you work it out with the petitioner, and if he's satisfied with that, then we'll proceed. If he's not, then we understand. Mr. Volkman?
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Austin.
The one thing I do remember from my bar exam, maybe Jim remembers it too, is the law of contract. And it requires an offer, it requires an acceptance, it requires consideration. I haven't seen the document yet, and I understand that there's been a lot of discussion, and finally, over the last day or two, we've concretized the document a bit, but it isn't really ripe for the public meeting action.
Thank you, Dave.
So with that being said, I will make the motion to defer this to the September meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, Mr. Troxel.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvitas?
Yes.
Mr. Getzloff?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there is a working document, and obviously Jim and Bob can get together and get going on it now, and Jim should be directed to do that.
Mr. Gorman, did you hear that?
I did.
I would concur to it, for you to keep working on it then.
Yep.
Thank you. Next item, we move right into new business. Resolution two thousand twenty-three-nine is a resolution authorizing an entry into joint inter-local corporation agreement for membership participating in the South Lake County Crash Reconstruction Team, which is S L C C R T, and all matters related thereto. I do have a letter from our, or a note from our Board of Safety Attorney. It was addressed to myself. Dear Council President, I write on behalf of the Town and Shererville Board of Safety and Chief of Police Pete Sormas at the July sixth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Safety meeting. The Board of Safety passed a motion approving and recommending to the town council the joint inter-local and mutual aid agreement for the South Lake County Crash Reconstruction Team, S L C C R T, attached here too. The motion passed five oh in favor. Therefore, the Board of Safety and the Chief of Police Sormas recommends that the town council approve an inter-local joint local agreement for the South Lake County Crash Reconstruction Team. If at any time you have any questions or concern, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Alfredo Estrada, from Burke, Constance, and Carberry, our Safety Board Attorney. Chief Sormas, do you have any comments on this?
No, sir, but I'd like, just to summarize, that the Shererville Police Department would like to join the interlocal agreement to organize, fund, and operate with the South Lake County Crash Team, just for the purpose of using the specialized law enforcement skillsets that's provided by that team, and they're basically focused on fatalities and severe injury accidents. So with having two main roads going through our town, U.S. thirty and U.S. forty-one, I think that would be a much-needed resource for our police department at this time.
Okay. Mr. President? Motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three-nine.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a couple more questions from Mr. Sormas. So it basically will work similar to your SWAT team that's countywide, very similar. When there's a major accident here in Shererville, you can call this team in to help you on an emergency accident situation.
Absolutely. Would have more resources, more human resources and specialized technology that the other towns already have purchased, and by joining them, we wouldn't have to purchase that equipment, and we would have the skillsets of experienced officers, along with our officers, working on those accidents. And recently, we've just had three fatalities in our town in seven months, so by calling that out, we'd have more resources. It would be a structured on-call status for these officers, and when we respond, when we request, they will respond. And also, we've also spoke with Lake County and State Police, and they are not providing this service to any towns in this area anymore. They're unable to provide throughout the state. They're just responding to their calls for service.
Very good. Mr. Gorman, did you have any comments on this?
I do not, but there is a member, Pete mentioned that there is a member.
Yes, I'd like to also introduce the team, Daryl Schaefer. He's also here tonight to help with answering any questions or any concerns that the council might have tonight. He's an officer with the St. John Police Department who's part of this local agreement also.
Just to comment, I think our officers will be able to learn from these subject matter experts.
Absolutely. We have currently two officers in the training, which takes about a year to complete all the courses, and we're looking to pair up the experienced officers with the new officers in order to transfer those skillsets.
Perfect.
Sounds like a win-win.
Does anyone have any questions, other gentleman here?
No.
No, thank you very much for coming, though.
Thank you.
Thank you for being.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you for being here, sir. We have a motion, we have a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Next item's Resolution two thousand twenty-three-ten, a resolution authorizing entry into a joint inter-local cooperation agreement with another participating unit of local government, which is the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission for the Eagle Ridge Culvert Replacement Improvement Project and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is authorizing entry into the JICA for the Little, with the Little Calumet River Basin. That project was a fifty-fifty match. It came in under what was estimated, and the total cost of the project was four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So we ended up getting, we will get payment from the Little Cal for two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, two twenty-two-five.
And for everyone in the audience, that's the main culvert that's located over by the post office on Eagle Ridge Drive, which is, which is, discharges any, probably most of our water in the town, correct?
Plus the wastewater plant discharge, yeah.
Plus the wastewater plant, so it's a major, major part of our town, so.
Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three-ten.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item C is Resolution two thousand twenty-three-eleven, a resolution of the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, approving the Town First Amendment to an inter-local government agreement with the Town of St. John, Indiana, and Lake County, Indiana, for the rehabilitation reconstruction of West eighty-fifth Avenue from Alexander Street to Lake Hills Drive and all matters related thereto. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a joint interlocal agreement as well between the county, the town, and the Town of Shererville, and the Town of St. John. There was an amendment due to a cost decrease for the county and Shererville, and we need a resolution to approve this amendment, and that's what's in front of you tonight. The work's already been done.
And this is amended, amended resolution?
Yeah, it's an amended.
Amended agreement.
Yeah, it's an amended amendment to the original agreement, and it needs to be passed by resolution.
Mr. President, motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty-three-eleven.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next item's item D, consider acceptance of agreement between Peterson Consulting Services Incorporated and the Town of Shererville for preparation of the capital asset report for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars plus out-of-pocket expenses. I'll defer this to Mr. Troxel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this is an annual agreement here with Peter Consulting Services. They assist the Clerk's Treasurer's Office in the capital asset reporting that's required every year, so there's a small increase from last year. It went from thirty-eight fifty to thirty-nine fifty.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item E is consider a variance of use to allow a car wash facility within the U.S. forty-one Commercial Corridor, Ovalay District. Mr. Gorman? I'm sorry. Border Zoning Appeals Case twenty-three-seven-ten, the petitioner's Crew Car Wash, the location is six thirty-seven, U.S. forty, Lowe's subdivision lot one. It came with a BZA favorable recommendation as presented of four oh. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this did come from the BZA with a favorable recommendation to the town council. The proposed car wash will be located in the northwest corner of the Lowe's parking lot, right at forty-one and Old Street, and the petitioner is here tonight, as well as representatives from Crew Car Wash, and they do have a couple of renderings that they probably want to share. Go ahead.
Yes, come on up, or?
You can just, you can set them up right in front there, closer to the dais, towards the dais.
Welcome, members of Crew Car Wash, and welcome Attorney Weiser. You're representing Crew Car Wash tonight?
I am, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to do this as succinctly as I can, although we did have the public hearing that was properly noticed at the Border Zoning Appeals, but given the, kind of the vagaries and the status of Indiana laws that relates to these kind of approvals in Lake County, I think it's incumbent upon us to make a presentation, and I'll try to make it as, again, as brief as I can, but hit all the highlights that was in a much more expanded presentation at the BZA. First, I will just briefly introduce, I have the owner of Crew Car Wash, Bill, Dom, is here, and he has his entire crew with him. Pun was intended. Let me just, at the Border Zoning Appeals, I would like to point out that we had the full hearing. The decision was unanimous for a favorable recommendation. There was no opposition, no remonstrance against the project at the Border Zoning Appeals, and I know tonight that when you called for public comment, no one appeared, so I can presume that there's no opposition as well here this evening. Quickly, Crew Car Wash, I think everybody's familiar with the organization, outstanding organization that has several sites already existing in Lake County. For several years, as they've related to me, as Bill's related to me, a site that they always desired, or a community that they always desired to be located in, simply couldn't find the appropriate location to fit their needs and the needs of the community was Shererville. And this, and as you know, they have been diligently searching for sites. This particular location seems particularly fit for this purpose, and I say that because if you look at the Lowe's site, which is substantially overbuilt, the area that they intend to locate almost looks like an outlot. And the reason that we find it, and they find it, I should say, my clients find it so attractive, is because of the location that has all of the needs, at least from the town's perspective, infrastructure needs done and accomplished and completed, that benefits them and would benefit any user of their facility. It's located at a traffic signal. It proposes, and we pointed out to the BZA that we have a traffic pattern, so that you can, you can enter safely from most any direction. You can exit, and then improvement's gonna be made to connect to Oak Street and connect to the road that is behind, I still call it a frontage road, even though it's a behindage road, I guess, I don't know what you'd call that, but it's behind Chick-fil-A at Longhorns, and so there's plenty of availability for continued and smooth traffic flow. In other words, there won't be, there won't be a traffic problem there at all, which sometimes is a concern in something like this. That's a first, a first point. A second point that I'd like to bring up is, we, especially myself, who happens to not only have my law in this community, live in this community, to note that the town council for some time has been engaged in surveys, been engaged in public council for some time has been engaged in, in surveys, been engaged in public hearings and public comment to determine how you're, how you're going to address property, at least in theory, property, commercial property available on US 30. And that, that one particular area, the formerly Anna Speedway is very attractive. I've, I myself have had several, more than several calls from commercial developers and advised all of them that, no, the town has a plan and the town appears to have a plan and they've decided that that's, that's going to be preserved and it's going to be preserved for the use of the community in a number of recreational and athletic and environmental kind of uses, which is great. Even more reason why they're located in an area that's designated a commercial area. That's what makes sense to go into that area. Because the only reason we're here, and I shouldn't say the only reason, primary reason that we're here, is because you have the Commercial Overlay District and the underlying zoning is C3, but because of the Commercial Overlay District, we're required to obtain a use variance. And this is a perfect location for it. It's, it's in an area completely devoted to commercial uses. It's away from the area that the town and its comprehensive plan and its vision wants to see developed in a different manner and method that benefits the community. So we believe for those reasons, this, this makes a lot of sense. As far as the project itself goes, you have some renderings there. It shows you what their, what their operations look like. There's also a board there that shows you some, the materials that they utilize. There, just to give you a sense of how they operate, they generally operate, I think it's about 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. They, they engage on any given site usually approximately 18 or so employees. They service typically speaking in a, in a car wash of this size and facility, probably anywhere from 500 to 600 vehicles a day, but what they're servicing is vehicles that are already on the road. They really aren't, in a sense, a destination point. It's, hey, there's a lot of traffic on 41, we're going by, we want to wash our car and they go in and get the car washed. So it doesn't generate additional traffic. The, the benefits to the community, other than just the business itself, they're a very generous contributor to their communities in a variety of ways and charitable contributions, but more importantly, they will generate tax, real estate tax revenue on this site of approximately $150,000 annually, which is a substantial amount of money and can obviously be used for, by this community for the purposes for which you, you feel it best in the general fund. I'd also point out that given the tax structure in Indiana, in the event of a referendum for schools, that actually would be a much greater number for the school referendum because they're not limited to the, to the caps, to the tax caps. So we, for, for all, for all of those reasons, we think that, and the Border Zoning Appeals unanimously felt, that this was a business that was wanted in this area, located in the right place, answered, we answered their traffic questions. There is one question that was brought up, I just want to make reference to it. They do have, and it was a good question that the BZA asked, they have their, an internal water reclamation service, so they recapture the water that they use, so they don't put any additional burden on the, on the sewer system or on the wastewater treatment plant here in Shererville. So we think that all of those reasons lend themselves to this being approved, particularly in light of the fact that, again, the, the board that you appoint to, the members to, to hear these matters and be well-versed in these issues approved it unanimously. The final thing I would like to say at this point in time, and then we're prepared to answer any questions you may have, the other thing I'd like to say is, the Border Zoning Appeals adopted specific and extensive findings of fact, which we believe were right on point and we would ask that if this matter was to be granted, approved based on the favorable recommendation of the BZA, that you adopt those specific findings of fact as, as your own for that purpose. So having, having said all that, these folks are here to answer the technical questions and we're happy to do that, that any councilperson or staff person may have, and we thank you for the time that you've allowed us to make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer.
Mr. President, I've got.
Any questions?
I've got a question and then just a few comments. The berm, grassy area, whatever you want to call it, that's 41 from the Lowe's parking lot, will that be touched at all or will that remain as is?
Yes, I was just, yeah. It's not going to be disturbed at all.
All right, great, great. So I have reviewed the plan, a couple of comments, I want to thank you for listening. We had talked a year or so ago, there was some discussion about locating next to Chick-fil-A and our concern about the high volume of cars, you know, businesses, you know, like businesses side by side, so thank you for listening. I reviewed the plan, you know, I like the access from Oak Street, you know, I like that it's set back a little bit further from 41. You have an excellent product, there's no question. You know, I've used it, appreciate that, you know, investing in our town and to our AV is certainly going to contribute, I think, to the overall value of our town. I think it could be, the car wash would certainly be convenient for those who live right there. But I think overall, the plan is good, certainly a better location, you know, than the previous one. So I just, I thank you for listening to us, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Conley.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. Yeah, I, my concern was traffic when I went to the BZA hearing. There wasn't much discussion about how fast the cars get through and the amount of traffic and whether there's enough stacking for it. Do you guys experience, I don't go to the Crew Car Wash, I apologize, I just don't have one near me, but do you guys experience any times where the amount of cars trying to get through exceeds what you have in stacking ability? Who wants to answer that? Is that ever an issue?
No, we really don't have any of those issues. We actually have the system design that can speed up or slow down the car wash process as needed based on business and it's all automated, so there's no real control that the manager needs to do.
How many cars can you guys get through, say, in an hour or what, you know what I mean? Like how fast do they run through and how many can you?
Max speed per hour is upwards of 190 cars per hour.
190 cars per hour?
If we need to, yeah.
Yeah. And so you, you guys don't really have any, any problems getting everybody through? You're not?
The typical average amount of customers would serve an hour between 65 and 75.
So well, well within that number?
Oh, yeah, yeah. He's talking about the most extreme scenario where it's July 4th and it's sunny and, yeah.
And then the other question that I, I didn't get a chance to look at the plans and I apologize, we didn't, I didn't have those in front of me, so I don't know what the plan looks like as far as the aesthetics from US 41. What, what, are you guys adding landscaping? Are you adding anything as far as beautification? What's, what's the plan there? Because I see buildings and your pictures and I wasn't sure what was, what was going to be added elsewhere.
Okay. So this is the site plan that we had to go through the process of taking through Lowe's corporate approval for them to be okay for to go in front of their store. So you have the Lowe's here, this is the store here, this is the building, this is the additional landscaping here and this is the exit out of Oak Street. I apologize, it's not color coordinated for landscaping, but to answer your question, yes, there is additional landscaping on the site than what's there now.
So there's going to be landscaping on that berm that Kevin Conley was talking about?
Yes, if I'm understanding, if I'm remembering correctly the details of the landscaping plan, we have additional landscaping outside, the berm doesn't count for our landscaping. Our property is contained entirely within the parking lot. We have to conform to the city's landscaping plans on our property, so the berm won't count towards that.
Okay.
Caleb, if I just, could you jump in real quick? We knew that that, or we figured that that would be an issue if we were successful here for subdivision approval that we have to go through so that you'll certainly see a more detail, in fact, you'll see a very detailed landscape plan when we present it for that purpose.
Last question I had, and I apologize, the connection with Oak Street. My understanding is that's going to line up with the other, the other road that runs behind Chick-fil-A and Longhorn, correct?
That's correct.
Is there going to be a traffic control device there or anything getting people in and out of there? I don't know what's.
I, I, there was no detail on that, but I imagine there'd be stop signs and...
A stop sign coming out of Lowe's?
I would think so.
We assume there'd be some traffic device that would be required in the subdivision process, we just haven't gotten that far.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there is something that's considered there to make sure that we got people.
The plan specifically calls out directional turn lanes to get onto Oak with the no stop signs.
Is there going to be a straight lane going straight through over to the Chick-fil-A side as well? Is that what's going in?
I'm not sure if that detail shows it on here. So there's basically two separate lanes, a left turn lane, thinking the majority of the traffic will be going back to 41, a right turn and a straight lane that's shared here, with the understanding that right now the right turn lane.
Doesn't go anywhere.
Anywhere, yeah, yeah. So it'll act, it'll act as a straight lane for the time being.
That was all of my questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And Jim, thank you for bringing up the water reclamation. That was one of my questions as well, so I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Gil.
Mr. President, just one other comment. Mr. Weezer, you talked about the, you know, there was very little feedback and I did put the word out to residents, as I typically do, that, hey, there's, this is going to be before the BZA. If you'd like to come to the meeting and voice for or against, you're welcome to do that. I think I heard from two people, one for, one against, and I don't think there was much of a attendance at the BZA itself, so.
There wasn't any, yeah.
No, no. And I do think with the, with Crew coming, potentially coming in, will certainly help the businesses currently there. You know, help Lowe's and I think there's some open retail space within that development that hopefully would, would drive some interest, you know, with, with this development. So that's it, thank you.
And also like Mr. Weezer said, a lot of these issues, you know, with traffic and with landscaping and with the building itself and all that will be heavily discussed as they move through the process of the Planning Commission and the subdivision control, so you'll, we'll be able to see a lot more in that, so.
Mr. President.
Miss.
If all the questions are answered, then I'd like to make a motion for the Crew Car Wash to also include the facts of finding for the, for use of variance.
Second.
To approve, yes.
We have a motion to approve with the, with the findings of facts. We have a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it. You're going to like it, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item is, Item F is consider donation to the Lake Central Education Foundation for 100, for $1,000. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, this request was made last year by the Lake Central Education Foundation and it is for the same amount as we approved last year. And I believe, oh, there she is.
Hello.
Hello. State your name, please.
Yes, I'm Louise Talan from, a co-president from Lake Central Education Foundation. I do live in Dyer, Indiana, and with me tonight I have Sheracrosgrove.
I'm the new secretary for Lake Central Education Foundation and I live in Shererville.
Thank you.
And I believe in June, you folks have considered it and did take our flyers and about what the education foundation is about. You also were able to look at some other ways that we raise funds so that you all would know as a town council, that we don't just rely totally on donations from, you know, from your organization and we do have other fundraisers. Our purpose for the fundraisers is to provide educational grants to our teachers and the teachers take those grants and provide enhanced enrichment experiences to students within the Lake Central School Corporation. Thank you again for your time this evening that we have a chance to talk to you one more time.
Always good to see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Always a pleasure.
Mr. President, as I am on the board of the Lake Central Education Foundation, I'm going to recuse myself from any conversation or vote on this topic.
Mr. President, motion to approve the $1,000 donation to Lake Central. We have a motion, we have a second. Real call, Mr. Troxel, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain.
Mr. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Narvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Getzlo?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries four zero and with one abstain. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you are doing with these funds for our students within Lake Central. Thank you very much.
Selfish plug, if anybody wants, we're doing a 5K on September 9th to raise additional funds, so September 9th at the Lake Central School. It's also a walk in case you don't run.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Item G is consider donation to the, to the NICS Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation for $2,000. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is also a donation that was requested last year by the Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation and it is the same amount as last year. Thank you.
And I'd like to also make a note that both of, both of our donation requests tonight went in front of our donation committee and they both, they both were approved by our committee.
Mr. President, motion to approve the Northwest Indiana Cancer Kids Foundation for $2,000.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Item H is consider acceptance of donations for $6,448. Mr. Troxel, would you be able to read those for us?
Yes, I would like to. The donations accepted through the month of July are as follows. To the parks, we received from Annette Gordon, a bench donation of $1,700. A, also another bench donation from Gene Smith for $2,300. And the Impulso Woodfire Pizza slash Hocus Pocus donation for $200 for a total park donations of $4,200. To our park summer programs, we received the Ultimate Salon slash Hocus Pocus donation for candy was $50. The donation to the animal control area was from Lisa Kuz and her donation was for $60. Donation to the canine fund, we have the sale of T-shirts at the fireworks celebration was $440. The canine T-shirts from Bonadonna was $180. Canine T-shirts from Tom Schmidt, $20. Shererville Police Department Canine Donation, 80. And Shererville Police Department Canine Donation fundraiser was 180 for a total of $900 to the canine fund. To the VIFs program, Gail Lee donated $20 and the Shererville Police Department VIFs donation was $3 for a total of $23. The fire department received an in-kind donation from Shererville Firefighters Union 4279 was a pallet of water and hydration packets. That total in-kind donation was $465. The, to the fire equipment fund, the Enterprise TE Production Pipeline Company LLC donated $750. Total in-kind donations for the month, $465. Total monetary donations, $5,983 for a total dollar amount donated of $6,448. We thank you very much.
Motion to approve donations.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next item is business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. We do have some representatives from the Dave Walk and Kathy LaRue, St. John Township trustee. I'd like to say a few words.
Welcome Kathy, how are you?
So thank you. Tonight I have with me Steve Braemer and he is the State Commander for Dave Chapter 17 in Hammond and they actually help service the, the disabled veterans in our township. And then Bob Carnegie is the State Commander. And then Bob Carnegie is the state commander for Dave, and he's out of town, so he would have been here tonight. But we just wanted to come because the Dave Walk, as you know, is just around the corner, it's August 26th, and, you know, we've been working with, with Jim and Andy and Chief Sormez, and just putting all the details together. And we're just, we're looking forward to it. This is our second one in the township, and I can fill you in a little bit on the history of how this came to be, if you would like, but first of all, we wanted just to say thank you for your partnership. We, you know, without you, we couldn't do this. And even since we started just working on the Dave Walk, I know Chief Patterson contacted me about a disabled American vet, I connected him with Bob Carnegie, the state commander, and so we just continue to work together. So, anyway, thank you for your partnership, and if you have any questions for me, or Steve, or if you'd like to hear a little bit more, like I said, the history, just, we're here just to be available.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
On my calendar.
It starts right here at the police department across the street, right?
Correct, yep. It's going to be, start at the St. John Township Memorial, and then we'll go over to the 9/11 Memorial, and then walk down to Reader Park. And there are placards, so fallen, the fallen heroes bring placards, and there's over 300 placards of fallen heroes from the state since 9/11, and they'll have those, and actually we'll be, we were going to have it at the, in the parking lot of the police department, but then Bob Carnegie had mentioned to me and Chief about maybe putting the placards at Reader Park, because what the walkers will do is, there will be the presentation here, and then at, at the police department, then we'll walk to Reader Park, and you can walk around the park, look at the placards there, and then there's a lunch included with mission barbecue that they will be providing.
Awesome.
Very good. That's awesome.
Thanks, Kathy.
Do you have anything, Steve?
Any other comments from staff or questions?
No.
Steve, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you--
Pull that mic up if you have to, just pull the mic up.
I just wanted to thank you for having us, we're very excited to be partnering with you guys. All the proceeds that we get go directly to veterans in the area, so everything, you know, we're not federally funded, we don't get, everything we get is by donation, and everything that we get goes to disabled veterans in need. So every little bit helps, so we're very excited about this, and we want to thank you for the opportunity to do this.
We want to thank you for your service and all the other veterans that have served our country, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And you know what, I just, with what Steve just said, I just wanted to clarify, I had somebody actually ask me, they stopped by the office, and they heard about the Dave Walk, and they thought that proceeds were coming to the township, the trustee office, and it doesn't. I began to partner with them about two years ago, just to make awareness of what's available through this organizations for the vets, and to bring funds to help for our vets as well. And the township, the trustee, doesn't see any of that, it just goes directly through Dave, and then they service the veterans as they see needed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again. Tom, there's more from the floor.
Yeah.
Is there any more business from the floor?
Jeff Minard, 224 Deer Trail, I just want to give my thanks to the Sheraville Fire Department for the Station One, it really looks great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, any other comments from the floor?
Hi, my name is Georgianne Glavis, on behalf of Logan's Love, these are committee members, this is Logan's mom, Nicole, and this is Eliana Sfakis. On the 27th of August, we have the Logan's Love Tri-Town Autism Walk. So the goal is to keep Logan's memory alive and give back to the community, and the funds raised from the event are going to put Ben's Blue Bags, which are sensory toys, and helps the first responders de-escalate situations with like communication devices, and just different things to help a non-verbal person better communicate as well as possible with a first responder. And it also goes back to training the police as well, so--
Can you just pull that down?
I know, sure. It also goes back to training each police officer in responding in these situations as well. Our goal is to get the entire tri-town, these bags, and also potentially spread it. We want to become, we want this community to become a safe community for special needs children, and we want to show, that this community shows a lot of love toward these children. So we're hoping that Sheraville, Dyer, and St. John just remnants all this love for these children and keeping them safe and giving back to them. And we want to invite you guys all to come to the event and support autism. So we're hoping each council member here, each person in this room comes, walks, shows their love, shows the support for the children, and educating the community, and educating the first responders, and educating everyone on how to deal with autism and any type of special needs, because there is 1 in 36 children diagnosed now, a daze with autism. So it's all around us.
Could you let us know the location?
The location is at the Sheraville Community Center. So we're hoping to see you guys there.
I will be there.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for supporting autism.
Thank you. Any other business from the floor? Any other business from the floor? This meeting's adjourned, thank you.